Staff, all city employees and even our citizens, we want to thank you and welcome you to this very, very special meeting. I think we could have used a rum stretcher, but I don't know if we could have made it big enough. But it's obvious that something very special is happening this evening. And we have an awful lot of people who are concerned about it, and I'm so glad to see that you are. Would you please stand? And we're going to have Councilman A. Acoa lead us in invocation. Remain standing for our pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for bringing this group of citizens together for a new growth for our great city. Tonight, we honor those that have served our city so well. At the same time, we welcome those that have been empowered by our citizens to represent their districts and this city in the future. Grant all of us the vision and the strength to move our city forward toward the city we all envision for the future. God bless this council, this city, and God bless America. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unafraid, unuttered, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to ask my favorite city clerk in all of this state. Have a roll call for us.
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor Frank Tim Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Aitken.
Here.
Well, we're here. Obviously, there are few absent, but we will continue. Next, we have our minutes and our work session and regular meeting on 19 October for approval.
Move to a second.
Motion and a second. Any corrections or additions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Aye. Polling.
Roll call. You can do a roll call.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. This is a special night. I think you see who's up here, but for the record, we've got to have a roll call. Would you please have a roll call for us?
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor Frank Tim Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Aitken.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, we'll get back on schedule. We did approve our minutes, and now we go to the public comment period. Anybody who would like to take up three minutes to address us with the subject of your choosing? Anybody? No one, so we will close our public hearing and we will move right along to our consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda, consensus of items B, C, and D. Three items on your consent agenda this evening, and we discussed those earlier with you.
Very well.
Move to adopt a consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further additions, comments? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King.
Yes.
Mayor Frank Tim Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Aitken.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. We have no items requiring individual action. I guess we move to departing comments. Ah, since I'm the only one up here departing, I guess. Well, I'll take all of their time. Since they're not here, no, I won't bore you with that. I do want to just say a few words. I have a lot of thanks, people and organizations who think, and I'd like to start with the School of Government. All of you have heard about the School of Government. It is where we really learn what's going on in local government. They are professionals, and I've been associated with them for over 30 years. And I've attended about every class they have. And I couldn't have done what I've done as the personnel director and as mayor without that. I would encourage all of our council members, first chance you get, whatever the course is, take it. It'll be good, I'll guarantee you. So, I appreciate them for being with me all through my career. Since 1979, as human resources director, I've been working with them. And the information I gain from them is just absolutely precious. I also want to thank the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I've been working with them for about 30 years or better as well. It's a great organization, an organization that provides oversight to all of our cities in North Carolina and towns, our municipalities. And we have about 554 municipalities. And I want to thank the members of the 554 municipalities for allowing me to serve as their president for a year and to work on the executive board for four years. There are so many, many things that I have to be thankful for. And I want to thank the hard-working staff. Man, let me tell you, this is a special group of people. And as citizens, you don't really understand who you have working for you every day. They give it their all plus. And I can tell you, I would go to war with this group. Colonel Sullivan knows what I'm talking about. I often say, I spent a year in Vietnam as a squadron commander. And that group of people were the most dedicated, most fearless group of people I've ever seen, but they were in combat. They had my back. They would have taken a bullet for me, and I would have for them. This group of people who will leave our city right now, they'll do the same thing. It's awesome. I'm going to miss them. So, keep your chin up. I'm not going for... And I want to say about the council that's been seated, you're in good hands. No question in my mind, this city is going to go places and do better. With this man right here, wow.
He not.
He has energy that I'm telling you, most of you don't know that. I know him. I've worked with him for 16... How long you been on the council?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. And boy, he loves this city. And anyone who does not understand that, you really need to get to know him a little better. And he's going to do just a fantastic job for this city. Because if he... He knows, we're very close. And he knows if he doesn't, I don't think I've got to say anything more. I don't worry about him, I said. And these other guys sitting up here, not many of them, but they are troopers, man. You can see, they're really troopers. And it's been my honor to work with them through the years. And boy, have we faced some tough obstacles, but boy, we have... We've been hurtlers. We have leaped some high hurdles. And we've enjoyed doing it. We might have tripped over one here and there, but in the final analysis, we won the race. And that's what's important. It's not how you start, but how you finish. Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to thank the great citizens of this city for allowing me the honor and privilege to lead it for 14 years. You're awesome. You are absolutely awesome. And the best is yet to come. I thought I shut that thing off. I think it's telling me to shut up. So, to all of you, I want you to know that you're lucky if you're sitting in here this evening. You've got a special group of people on a special mission, and they're fully capable of delivering. I know they are. So, to them, to you, and to everyone, I'd just like to stand and say, well, I think I'll just give a farewell salute to all our citizens out there. It's been great. Thank you. Thank you.
Will you not even sworn in and eat, Lee?
I will.
Yes?
I know you will. Scott? You got him. Yeah, you did. Thank you.
Just now, we want to move to the swearing-in of the oath of office. And we're going to start with District One. And Judge Gaylor, I hope, is here.
I have to move a word for applause.
You want to turn this around, Scott?
We are.
Hey, Antonio, you can't get sworn in in the hall.
You know, it's an honor to be here to have a chance to swear in these new... They were candidates, these new officers of our city. It's an honor, and there's nothing better, I think, than gaining the trust and respect of the people that are living nearby, and they want you to be the trustees of the city they love. And so, all of the people that will be sworn in tonight, I think it's a real honor and one that you can take as a real privilege to serve the people of the city of Goldsboro. And I want to start, please, with Mr. Antonio Williams as the first candidate. And so, Mr. Williams, if you will, please, I'm going to say a few words, and if you'll repeat those back to me. Now, who do we have holding the Bible for us tonight? Are you going to be holding the Bible?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. There you go, okay? And repeat after me if you would, please. I, Antonio M. Williams...
I, Antonio M. Williams.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
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 And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I want you to sign right there. Just in case y'all have some top end. Get you signed right there.
Thank you.
Sign it, make it official. I haven't had the privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and you are officially in office. Will you, Broadway, come forward, please?
Captain Broadway.
I know he was here.
He's coming.
Ann, are you going to hold the Bible for him? Okay, there you go. You'll place your left hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right hand. And I, William W. Broadway...
I, William W. Broadway.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution...
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Broadway, if you'll come around and sign.
If I can get you to do it one more time, there are two cards. Thank you. Got that signed on? It's not a ticket either. Richard makes me a...
I meant to tell you, I've got some papers for you. Thank you, Bill. Congratulations. Okay. Mark A. Stevens. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. And who's going to hold the Bible? Are you going to... Okay, there you go. Great, thank you. That's wonderful, all right. Left hand on the Bible, please, and raise your right hand. Thank you very much. I, Mark A. Stevens...
I, Mark A. Stevens.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Congratulations. Come on over. You get this one? I need you to do it one more time, please, sir. Thank you very much. And right there as well, please, Mr. Stevens.
All right, now let me sign off on it. Please, let's look right over here. There we go.
Who's going to be holding the Bible? Okay, thank you so much. How you doing, sir? Good to see you.
Nice to see you, young man.
Okay. Good to have everybody here. I, Bevan J. Foster...
I, Bevan J. Foster.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
The Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Thank you. If you'll come around.
I guess they get the applause meter.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Could you put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I, Walter D. Ham...
I, Walter D. Ham.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
The Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Congratulations. We are with... Thirty-second delay.
Is that it? This is... We're going to do four again. Okay, ready. Okay.
Otherwise known as Jim. Are you sure you're going to hold the Bible? Right there, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, please.
I, Thomas E. Acoa.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
The Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As council member of the city of Goldsboro...
As council member of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll sign off on it. Do you have anybody to hold the Bible for you? Come on up.
Hit him, hit him.
Thank you, Laurie.
Come on, young son.
Got them all up here. Come on, we need everybody. Okay. All right, Mr. Allen, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Thank you. I, Lawrence C. Allen...
I, Lawrence C. Allen.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain...
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina...
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As mayor of the city of Goldsboro...
As mayor of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Normally, I would tell you that my comments were going to be shorter than Mayor King's comments would be, but this one time, I don't know. I'm not sure. And I hope I can get through this. He got me emotional up here. And I said, but the first thing I do want to do is I just want to thank everybody for coming. There's a lot of friends in this audience. There's a lot of people who work hard to get all of us elected, and we really appreciate... I'm not going to start naming names because there's too many people, but we really, really appreciate everyone that voted, everyone that's taken the time to come out tonight, and just for all your support. Gosh, saying goodbye, and I don't know if goodbye is the right word, but saying like a farewell for a while to Mayor King is a really hard thing to do. Not only is he my mayor, he's my friend. Over the last 14, 15 years, we've just really gotten to be close, and I can tell you, there's no finer, finer gentleman walking this earth than Mayor King. He's just a great guy. To our other council members who aren't here tonight who are departing, we wish them the best, but it's been a good run. We've had a good team. But I feel like we're going to have a better team. We're... I'm really welcoming the new people. We're going to get excited. We've already had some meetings. We've already had some conversations. And I think you're going to like what you see over the next few years, and I'm excited. There are a few guests I need to recognize. Mr. Tollis, the guy Tollis is our Division Four Transportation Board Director, and he works very hard as our partner in transportation, does a lot for us. Really glad to have him. I saw our county manager, George Wood, and several of our county commissioners have been here or were here, and we partner with them a lot, and we really are very, very appreciative that they would be here. There may be some other elected officials that I've missed, and if I have them, sorry. My friend, Colonel Slocum. Gosh, I don't know what even how to begin with him, but let me tell you about Colonel Slocum. Usually, a commander comes here for two years, they leave, and every time, we say, you can't get any better than that one. Well, here comes Colonel Slocum, and I swear, he's better than the last one and the one before that. And he got here, and his big thing is morale and his airw- and airwings. That's his thing. That's what he cares about. And they were all complaining about how there's nothing to do in Goldsboro, they're bored and all that. Well, instead of taking that, Colonel Slocum said, well, why don't I start some clubs on the base? So, they've got dance clubs, cooking clubs, hunting clubs, fishing clubs, Spanish clubs. I don't know. They've stood up over 100 clubs at the base. And I think it's one of the only Air Force places that does this, and it's certainly just successful. So, that's just a sign of what you can do if you want to do something. Colonel Slocum just told me tonight that another one of his pieces of great work, or the base's great work, I guess, is that the Blue Angels are coming here for our airshow in the year '17. That's great news. That's a really big deal for us. And we also learned today that Colonel Slocum is getting pinned for Brigadier General. And we're very proud of him. And we look forward to seeing him a few years ago and saying, we know him when he's up there in the Pentagon and head of the Air Force and all that. So, we're looking forward to watching him. Because, Mayor, we do create good leaders here, don't we? They always leave and do good.
We make them.
I just saw Senator Davis, Don, welcome. Glad to have you here. Kate and Laura from the Chamber, they're our partners. We do a lot with the Chamber, a lot of organizations. We couldn't do what we do without the schools, all these community people that help us. I mean, I don't want to leave anybody out. There's so many people, but it's very important to have relationships. I think it's a huge, huge deal in getting things done. And as I go through this, you'll maybe see why I think that. I do want to tell you what I see as a vision. I've met with all the council members. I've met with the manager. We've met with the council members, just to see what everybody's thinking, what their vision is. And to be honest, we're all pretty close to the same thing, which is a good thing, I think. And I'm going to... And I'm going to tell you what I see that we're going to do, maybe a little more so than normal. Maybe outside the daily stuff we do. And the first thing, and these are in no particular order, it's just how I wrote them down, to be honest. But during the election, I heard a lot about crime, about gangs, about shootings. And we all know that's a problem in the city. We have, our police force is not manned where it should be. We're about 17 inches short, which is basically a shift. I can tell you that the manager and Chief West work on this probably daily. They know the importance of getting these positions filled, and we're doing that. To be honest, I think we had a pretty low morale at the police department. And the manager and Chief West have talked to a lot of policemen. And I just want to tell you all some things they have done as a result of these conversations, just so you get the whole picture that we do care and we are trying. But they've implemented several changes. The officers now have take-on cars. They have individual tasers. We switched from Chevrolets to Dodges, because they like Dodgers better. You're getting in-car computers. We're improving the gym equipment. Officers, if they had to come back in, sometimes they didn't get compensated, which I don't know, made no sense. But anyway, we fixed that. There were officers come back in for training, have to go to court. They're supposed to be getting compensated. I think these are just some initial things we have done, and I think they have improved the morale of our officers. And hopefully, we will retain the ones we have. We won't lose any more. We'll build the police work back up. But I do want you to know that policing is hugely important to us, and we talk about it a lot. Some other items that we talk about in the policing line is community policing. You know, I would like to see, and I think the council would like to see, us go more into some of these rougher areas with individual policemen and let them learn the folks that live in the area. I think that's important. So some community policing. I think you'll see us reactivate or reconnect our drug squad with the sheriff's drug squad. We're not probably as in sync as we should be, and we're going to work on that. I think you'll see in the next year that we look at ShotSpotter. Basically, ShotSpotter is a system that when a gun goes off within a three-mile area, it triangulates. And it tells an officer, sit in a car on a computer right where that shot is, and within seconds, he can be there. That's got some good and bad to it. We got good results, good data. I'm not 100% sure I want our officers going to a shop that's fixing, but it is, you know, they're prepared. They can handle it, right, guys? I'm speaking for you. You're getting shot at, not me. But, no, it will. I think it's something we're definitely going to look at seriously. Yeah, I think the manager's already working on that. The other thing that we've talked about doing is the civil abatement of some of these nuisance properties. Places we have to keep on going with police calls. It's dangerous. We go repeatedly. There's just no sense in it. So through the ALE and the attorneys, they're coming up with a process where we can do. I'm going with civil abatement. I don't really know what they call it. But that's something you'll see us working on, and I think you'll see some good things happening in all of those areas. The next step I'm going to go about is, I'm going to call it quality of life. And basically, right now, today, we have about 200 houses on our minimum housing list, which means we've got 200 houses that need to be tore down. We're tearing about 10 houses a year down. So that's 20 years to tear down to 200. There's probably 200 more sitting right back out behind them. So we're about 40 years out. And that's just the ones that I know that we know about, and I'm sure there's more. So we've got to figure out a better way to do that. We've got to partner more with other folks. The Housing Authority, I think you're going to find, is going to be a really good partner for us. Habitat for Humanity, we're going to go to all these folks and see how we can catch some of these houses before we have to tear them down. I mean, I think that's the first step. We're going to have to get property owners more involved in their own property. We don't need to be policing your property. We want you to do it. So, you know, I think you'll see us, I hope you see us get stricter about these kind of things. And I guess my biggest pet peeve is littering. I'm telling you, this town, and people told me at the polls, people from Montana, it really bothers me, because I'm very proud. This town, they're telling me, is dirty. If you get in a ride around, it's dirty. I mean, and they work on it all the time. I'm not taking, but I'm telling you. My boys and I just went last week to Kansas. We landed in Wichita. We rode an hour in Kansas on the highways. We saw four pieces of litter in an hour. Here, if you went from here to Raleigh, you'd see four million pieces. So there's something wrong. There's something fundamentally wrong with what we accept, I think, as a community. So one of my charges, and I hope the council will be with me, is I want to see the police be a lot more active in ticketing. I want to see a lot more community involvement, because we shouldn't live with it. We don't have to live with it. And we've got to figure out how. The other thing that I think you'll see us do, and I'm really excited about a lot. We have some really, really good things with our partners at the county. I think in 2016, you'll see ground broken for the Ag Civic Center. Personally, I've been working on that 19 years. So, I mean, that shows you how slow government moves. But it's going to happen. We're really excited. With the base in the county, we're working on the multi-sports complex. I think in 2016, you'll see that break down. Really a big deal. Really good. The WA Foster Center is coming online in March. I don't know if you probably haven't been in it, but I'm telling you, it's going to be a phenomenal facility, and the folks over in that area need that facility bad. So I think that's going to do a lot for our children, a lot for our elderly, and it's just going to be a great facility. So we're looking forward to that. We continue to work on greenways. We're continuing to work on our parks, sidewalks, connectivity. We'll always continue to work on that. And this coming year, Berkeley Boulevard will be completed, widening of Berkeley Boulevard. I'm sure people like Jackie Ward that go up and down it every day will be happy to see that. We've been working on that probably 10 years now, too. Highway 70 bypass will be completed this year. That's going to be, give us good connectivity. So that's a good thing. We're working right now with DOT, with Mr. Tollis and his folks, on fixing Central Heights and Berkeley Boulevard. The intersection there, a big deal. It'll tie back through Fallon Boulevard and give another way into Berkeley. We're working on widening William Street from the new bypass back into Paytown Road. I think you'll see a step-up effort from the city to do resurfacing and to do more street paving. And I think that's an effort that everybody wants to work on. And we really got really great news this past week, where Congress and the President have signed the transportation bill, which basically is going to designate I-795 as an interstate. Huge, huge deal for Goldsboro, but eastern North Carolina. So that's a great thing. Some of the other things we'll continue to work on, we'll continue to work on and monitor race relations. I think it's hugely important. 54% of our population is African-American, and I want to be sure that we stay engaged. I don't want to have problems that some of these other communities are having. And so through the council, through our outreach, we're going to figure out ways to stay engaged and not have these problems. I think it's important to recognize that 23% of our citizens are 18 and younger, and 15% are 65 and older. So we've got to figure out activities that accommodate these populations, because they're very needy populations, both ends. The old and the young are always wanting something. So we've got to work on that. It's also very important to recognize that 26% of our population live below poverty. That's not good. We've got to figure out how to create more jobs. We've got to figure out how to get more higher-paying jobs, and we're going to have to work on this, because that's not a good thing. All right. So I guess my last thing, and this is probably the most sentimental of me, but as a new mayor, if I don't talk about this, then I think I'm making a mistake. But I'll tell you, the biggest challenge, and I guess the biggest problem we have in the city, in my opinion, is our school system and our inner city. Specifically, I'm talking about the Goldsboro High School attendance area, okay? And let me tell you those schools. School Street, North Drive, Carter Heights, Dillard Middle, and Goldsboro High School. Contains 2,000 kids, 90% black, mostly low wealth, and all the schools are performing at D or F levels. So what that tells you is that's the worst-performing bunch of schools in the city, or in the county, in the school system, period. So I got to tell you now, and I've said this publicly, it's my 19 years in the elected officials. The one thing that I just feel like we have failed the most on is our school system and engaging our school system. We have not had any luck in the past. The mayor, he, I about got, he just wouldn't go to any meetings. It made him so mad. And we haven't had no collaboration. It's been a disaster. I mean, I'll be honest, and our school systems have just, and our inner-city schools have just gone downhill. They really have over the last year. Now, I tell you that because it's important to our business, but it's equally important to Colonel Slocum and his folks coming in. I want to just give you a few comments that I've seen on Facebook and all that, to deal with the military and the military families. And I've got a lot of data, but in the interest of time, I'm not going to give you the data. I was going to give you some comments. But basically, military families moving to or from other states for extremely concern about whether their children are receiving a competitive education in Wayne County. So whether they're going or coming, you know, they get social media before they get here and read it, and when they leave, their kids maybe aren't prepared. So there's a lot of concern there. They're equally concerned that the performance of our schools, and these aren't just inner-city schools. These are all the Wayne County public schools, are below the North Carolina national average, as well as other Air Force communities that we compete with. So basically, we're below everybody, is kind of what that point is saying. It's become such a problem, I think, for Colonel Slocum's folks, that they're moving to Johnson County, or they're moving to Raleigh, or they're coming here without their families, or there's 1,900 military kids. I think I had 27% of them are being either in private school or home school. Well, both of that's a problem, because it's taking resources and keeping good kids out of our public schools. So it's all, it all relates. So I've told you the negative, and it's pretty negative. But there are, I believe, some positives. And I think the first step in working on any problem is to recognize you have a problem and admit you have a problem. And I do think in the hiring of Dr. Dunham Moore, our school system has said, we know we've got a problem. And I think he has come here and said, y'all got a problem. And I think that right now, they've gone on to all the schools. They've talked to us. They've talked to the base. They've talked to several people, and they're working on a strategic plan. And we have another meeting this Friday. They've included us. They've included the base and all the folks, okay? So I think it's really important that we do that, that we roll that plan out. And I really, for once, have some hope that we're going to make some changes, and that they're going to make some changes, and it's going to be positive. So, and there are good things going on in the school system. I don't want to just sit here and bash the school system, but as it relates to us, there are not too many good things going on. So, but I don't want to do that. But I do tell you this, it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight. I do believe that. And Colonel Slocum told me in a meeting one time, he said, the day is the day to plant the tree. And I'm like, well, I'm a horticulture major. What does that mean? And I think he thought I was too stupid to understand, or he thought because I was horticulturist, I might know what he was talking about. I don't know. But if you don't plant the tree, then you can't start raising the tree, right? You can't start looking after it. You can't start neutering. So, but I want you to know this, the city council, the county commissioners, the school board, all our partners, we can all plant the tree, but we can't all raise the tree. We can't all, it's going to take citizen input. I mean, it's a huge deal. Some way, somehow, we got to find a better way to educate our children. I mean, it's hugely, hugely important that we do that. We got to expand and invigorate on partnerships that are already there. We need to embrace Dr. Dunham's, I personally believe, everything I did with the feeding program, they tell me that the third or fourth grade, you've got to get these kids. If you don't get them by then, you lose them. So I personally think that if every church, every person, Colonel Slocum would provide, if everybody would involve, if we had to, we could put a mentor in every third and fourth grade class, school student. It can be done. It's just somebody's got to want to do it and do it. But if that's at the level we're at, and that's what it takes, then that's what we're going to need to do. We don't, the military spouses are a huge, huge tower pool that we don't use. We don't tap them. We don't use them enough. I know they're willing. They're just not asked. I mean, so that's, those are things we can work on. We got to build pride in our schools. I'm not telling you I know how to do it, but we've got to get the teachers, the parochial students. We've got to get more pride in our schools. I mean, it's hugely important. Colonel Slocum also told me this. We need to have a roadmap. I'm, Colonel Slocum's educator. And we want to know what we're going to do in the first year, where we're going to be at 2020, and where we're going to be at 25, 2025. And every year, we need to sit back and we need to reassess. What have we done? Where are we at? What is going to happen? And I think that that's a huge, huge deal. And I can tell you, we've talked about this for 19 years and 20 years, and nothing's ever happened. So today's the day that we can make a difference. But it's going to take the community to make a difference. It can't be just the elected officials. It's got to be people looking after people, people looking after their own kids, people looking after other people's kids, whatever. But, you know, if we, our goal ought to be that every school in Wayne County is a grade A. And every school and every child has an opportunity to earn a good quality education. That ought to be our goal. I mean, there's no reason that can't be our goal. So if we do that, and we get anywhere close to our goal, then we're going to solve life. We're going to solve poverty, and we're going to solve crime, because all that's going to go away to a large extent. And what else I think you see is going to happen is our school systems, in my opinion now, are a detriment to anything in the city. We recruit what people live in here, whatever it is, when they see what's, they don't want to come move here. I mean, they don't want to do it. And if we get these schools where they're back into B's and A schools, just think what happens. Families want to move here. Missions want to come here. Businesses want to come here. And all of a sudden, our schools become an economic tool. I mean, they help us. They don't hurt us. But I'm telling you, we can't do it. Mr. Wood and the commissioners can't do it, and the school workers can't. We all got to get off the island. We got to collectively do it together. And Colonel Slocum always speaks, I'm about to wear Colonel Slocum out. But he always speaks about the power triangle, which is the county, the city, and the base. And you'll be glad that I went on the internet today and did some research. And I looked at a Pentagon, but I didn't like Pentagon, because I thought you'd be thinking I was talking about Washington. But a Pentagon is five groups. I said, well, we need a power base or a shape of five groups. We need the city, the county, the base, the school system, and the housing authority, because all these play huge roles. But then I got to look at more, and I saw a hexagon. And a hexagon is six. So I said, well, we need to put the citizens in there, too. So we're going to form a hexagon. And that's the only time I think I've ever done any math, but anyway. And we're going to put all these people together, and we're going to do something. And, I mean, and we're going to judge ourselves in a year, and we're going to judge ourselves a two-year. And, you know, I'm a type A personality, and I got ADD, T, and all those other things, too. And we're going to go, and, you know, I hope that nobody tries to stop us, because we're going to make some changes. I think this council's 100% behind me. I know the manager. And as the mayor said, we got one of the best staffs in North Carolina, and I know they're behind us. So with y'all's help, we can do some good things, and I'm excited.
Okay, now let me put my glasses on. All right, next on our thing, since we've got this captive audience, is we've got the mayor pro temp discussion. Item F.
Move to deferred next meeting.
We have a motion to defer, and a second. Any discussion? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a city manager report.
Mayor, council, no report this evening. I do want to welcome our new members. Look forward to working with each of you. Congratulations, and we both have a lot to learn, but it'll be a good journey. So welcome aboard.
Thank you. City attorneys report.
The only thing I do is welcome the new members, too, and if any of you have any questions about the city attorney's office, please feel free to contact me anytime.
Okay. We've got the mayor and council member reports. Start with you, Antonio. You have any comments, or?
You know, I'm just glad to be here. I appreciate all my voters, my constituents, the past council. I appreciate all the work they did. I know it wasn't easy, and I look forward to working with our community. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Baldwin?
I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. This is one of the largest crowds we've ever had, and I think it just shows that what this country can do. 74 years ago, we weren't very happy tonight when we had Pearl Harbor. We can't forget that. We cannot forget that. And look at this room, and that's what America's about. So thank everybody for coming.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out and supporting all the new council. And to everyone who has supported myself and the others, we, you know, I can say that it's been a complete and utter journey, but we are going to continue on and do the best we can by everyone. And our numbers are always open, so please feel free to give us a call, and don't hesitate to give us a call. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody, my family, friends, everybody that's supported me on this campaign trail. It wasn't a rough, it wasn't an easy one, let me say that. I'd like to thank the new council members, the old council members for welcoming me. I look forward to working with all these guys. I think we're going to have a successful four years. I think we're going to make a lot of progress, and we're going to work together to make the community a lot better. I thank all of y'all.
As someone who was born and raised here in Goldsboro, it's an honor for me and a privilege to serve the citizens of this town. And not, someone made a statement during the campaign, which I wholeheartedly support. There's more to Goldsboro than just downtown. And I look forward to doing what I can to make this city as a whole a better place. Thank you.
You know, it's bad when you've been on the board for just a little over three years, like Bill and I, and we're the old guys on the board. Three years' experience, but it takes a while. And, you know, I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Williams and... And, you know, I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Williams and Mr. Foster, and Mr. Stevens, and Mr. Hamm. And moving Goldsboro toward the vision that really, I think Chuck said it, you know, if we can get that accomplished and get it going, then we've made some major accomplishments, and I'm looking forward to being part of it. Thank you.
All right, next I do have a resolution to read, and it's a resolution commending and expressing appreciation to Alfonso King, I don't know who that is, Alfonso King, for serving as the mayor of the city of Goldsboro for 14 years. Whereas, Alfonso King served this community and the city of Goldsboro well in numerous capacities, including 14 years as mayor of the city of Goldsboro since 2002. And whereas, Mayor King's genuine care for people and passion for Goldsboro is a hallmark of his career, which he has pursued passionately with distinction, loyalty, integrity, and courtesy. And whereas, during these years of service, Mayor King has gained the admiration and respect of local and state officials for his untiring efforts in providing for orderly growth in Goldsboro. Whereas, during his term in office, Mayor King has served on the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees, the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, the Downtown Goldsboro Development Corporation Board of Directors, United Way of Wayne County Board of Directors, the Child Nutrition and Outreach Program Committee, and several other special project committees. Whereas, in his service to municipal government, Mayor King has also served as president of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, chairman of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Management Services Board of Trustees, chairman of the North Carolina Governor's Military Advisory Council, and member of the North Carolina Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition. And whereas, many projects have been commenced and completed by the city during Mayor King's years of service, including construction of the new city hall addition, renovation of the existing city hall, rebuilding the Paramount Theater, the Stony Creek Park Project, GWTA Transfer Center, WA Foster Center. Damn, it sounds like ain't nothing left to do. Overall economic development growth and downtown revitalization efforts, including Phase One and Phase Two of the Center Street State Project. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and that the mayor and city council especially, Alfonso King, on behalf of themselves and the other city officials, employees, and citizens of the city of Goldsboro, our appreciation and gratitude for your unselfish, devoted, and invaluable service and contributions rendered to the council and the city of Goldsboro in its many capacities in which you have served. And we offer you our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, good health in your future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated and officialized in the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect this date, December 7, 2015. I would like to offer this resolution as a motion. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Motion carries. What is the topic here? Come on, Mayor, you got one more thing to do. Okay, I got one more comment, and I'll let y'all go, I promise. I just want people to get excited about one thing. We had lights up downtown recently. We had the parade this weekend. I've had numerous people call, text, email me, and say, "It's the best parade they have ever been to." Downtown is the best it's ever been, which we already knew that for. But I just want to tell you, every time I go downtown, I get excited, because I see new people, new faces, new things happening, businesses coming, and I just invite you and ask you to come share your downtown with us, because it's a really, it's just a really great improvement. Any more business to come for us? If not, we stand adjourned.
Could you adopt the other three resolutions?
I won't undo it. I'm sorry.
We'll leave it up to you.
No, 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 no. I'm done. Also, under, and I didn't read them, because they're not here, to be quite honest, but we also have resolutions commending Michael Haddon for eight years of service, Bill Goodman for 19 years of service, and Charles Williams for 20 years of service. And we do need to adopt all these, because there's all those men put a lot of work in, and we appreciate that. So I would offer that in the form of a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Motion carries. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and we stand adjourned.